I'd like to call the informational meeting to order. We're going to proceed tonight with an overview of the budget for fiscal year 2013. We'll then address other issues that may come up about the items that are going to be discussed at town meeting a week from Saturday. First, I'd like to know if we have reports from any of the three caucuses. The District One caucus? And if it did, is there a report from somebody from District One?
Yes.
Maybe we could use the microphone. Thank you.
I'm Orion Barber, Chair of the -- is this on?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay. I'm Orion Barber, Chair of the District One caucus. Hallelujah, we didn't have to appoint anybody. We elected enough, and I got re-elected Chair. That's it.
Congratulations.[76.59][76.59](APPLAUSE). Is there a report from the District Two caucus?
I'm Marshall Wheelock, Chair of District Two caucus. We needed to appoint seven people, and we found two people that were willing to accept. So we'll be caucusing again next Wednesday at 6:00. And I urge everybody in District Two that is at all interested in being a town meeting member, please come see us, 6:00, one week from tonight, right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you share with us the names of the two people who were elected at that caucus?
Carol Lee Bluen and Jacqueline Stromberg.
Thank you. And then District Three, please. District Three, do I hear District Three?
Don.
Well, there was a District Three meeting, and there was nobody who was present to be elected for the one opening, and there were some concerns expressed about the skate park. And I'll leave that to Mr. Webster to report when he comes in. This year's budget calls for, and it's on your town meeting report, beginning on page 65, it calls for both revenue and expenses in a total amount of $14,639 and $124. The budget, as you've seen from reviewing it, is divided into a series of individual departments. The largest expenditures that we've got for the coming year, as in years past, are for general government expenditures, which are almost 13 percent of our expenses this year, about $1,896,000. The fire budget is $1,668,697, which is 11 and 1/2 percent of the budget. Police and dispatch take up about, almost 16 percent of the budget, and that's $1,877 and $446,000 respectively. Public Works comes in just under 10 percent of the budget, at $1,004,000. Parks and Recs, about 3/4 of $1 million, about 5 percent of the budget. And then the library, at 4 percent of the budget, just under $600,000. Another very substantial part of the budget, which is not divided out among various departments, is benefits. Total benefits that we pay for our employees totals almost $2,750,000. So the benefits line is on, if you're interested. Page 70 is the breakout of the benefits, $2,750,000. What I would note also, just by way of overview in this budget, is that of the $14,600,000 and change, we pay $6,250-plus in wages, along with the $2,750 in benefits, we pay $9 million in salary and benefits over the $14 million total budget. So that's a very significant part of the budget that we had to approve this year. When fashioning the budget this year, we were presented with some very significant fixed increases that we couldn't avoid. Some of those increases include approximately $125,000 in increased health insurance costs, $96,000 in increased costs for insurance, risk management, regular liability insurance. We had increased costs for bombs for prior expenses of $137,000. There were increased costs for streetlights of about $33,000. In total, those fixed increases really tied our hands in dealing with the rest of the budget, because the initial budget that was presented to us with all the department heads' requests would have provided for a 5 or 6 percent increase and a very substantial tax increase, just on the municipal side, without considering what's happening at the school. And we worked long and hard over the course of the winter months to bring in this budget. The total costs this year will be 0.9 percent lower than last year's, and you see those numbers in the summary on page 66, just above general fund budget. Total expenditures, $14,639, is a negative 0.9 percent. Nevertheless, based upon some issues relating to the cost of the fire truck last year, the tax rate will be going up about 1 percent, I'm sorry, for an approximate rate, if this budget is approved, of $1,1311, so 1.1311. The impact on $100,000 house will be $11.20, on $150,000 house, $16.80, $200,000 house, $22.40, and the $250,000 house, $28 over the course of the year. I think that really provides an overview of what we're presenting to you this year. Most of the individual department budgets are level funded from last year to this year. We did include in this budget a 1 percent wage increase for staff members, and that's reflected under general government. There are also some adjustments throughout the budget for adjusting wage numbers so that the budgeted numbers reflect actuals over the last years. There's been some increases in fuel costs, in electricity, but generally, this is a very level-funded budget. The items that we had to sacrifice in order to present this budget to you came primarily out of the capital plan. And in the end of the day, there were two or three items that were cut after consultation with all the department heads and the town manager. Public Works asked to purchase a new grader at a cost of $250,000. We have two graders at this time, and one of them is approaching or past what's its initial life expectancy. We did put off the decision to purchase that grader for a future time. Also, we are purchasing, what is it, one cruiser?
Yes.
So we're purchasing one police cruiser this year. The town manager, working with the department head, the chief, and other personnel at the police department, had developed a rotation for cruisers. Instead of buying two cruisers, we're buying one cruiser this year. We also took out of the budget one of the ride-along lawn mowers that was going to be used for the West River Park. Although, we did add a half a position for mowing the West River Park this year, so that it'll be ready for use, Carol, in the fall? In the fall. So we do anticipate that the West River Park will be ready for initial use in the fall. We didn't buy a mower, but we did fund another partial position for the mowing. Public Works had also asked to buy, to purchase, I'm sorry, Parks and Rec had also wanted to build a new storage shed, maintenance shed, over at Morrow Park, and we did defer that expense as well. I think that's an overview of the budget, the $14.5 million budget for this coming year, and we're all here available to answer any questions you may have about that budget. Ben?
Just real quick, look, you alluded to something, a problem with the fire truck? The funding?
I don't think it's a problem with the funding. It explains why, even though we're down 0.9 percent, there's a little bit of a tax increase, and Mr. O'Connor's got to answer that question.
Yep, and last year, we didn't fully fund the budget. We had a deficit of $430,000. This year, we're fully funding all of the expenditures, and it's a balanced budget. So our tax rate has to go up, even though our expenses have come down.
When they say "not fully funded," it means it was paid for out of the unreserved, undesignated funds, or fund balance.
And this year, the only request out of the fund balance is for the Hurricane Irene costs, and that's a separate article. Who's in the back? Yes, please. I think that Mr. Johnson wants you to use a mic, please, Billy. Sorry for the long walk.
Billy Stark, District One. Just a couple of questions. Opt-out and HSA payments, it appears that wasn't budgeted this fiscal year, and could you just explain what that is and why it wasn't, and now it is?
Actually, it was budgeted. We had been budgeting, we'd been budgeting that in with the health insurance line item, and I'm looking for my corrected sheet here. Yeah. We had been budgeting in with our health insurance line item, and then during this current fiscal year, the decision was made to make that a separate line item. And so it looks like it went up from 0 to 190. It's actually, it should be in the health insurance payment line, on the HSA payments, that should be in the current fiscal year, $178,000. And then correspondingly, the health insurance is reduced by that much, so the health insurance line item would be $1,314,200. And so the actual increase in health insurance is about $110,000, or about 8.4 percent, and the actual increase in the HSA is at about $12,000, or about 6.7 percent. And we can have updated budgets if you want, if people would like that, but that is it.
I just needed an explanation for it. And the other question I have is on the, down under the bonds and notes, fiscal year 12, Merchant's Note. Could you just tell us what that is, or for, or?
John can do that, because there was some, a refinancing of the notes to save us some money.
Yes, we refinanced some leases this year, and we refinanced it by taking out a note with Merchant's Bank. And the first payment due on that note is next year.
Okay, good. I think that's it for now.
Thank you.
Good catches.
Are there any other questions about the budget? Well, if anybody thinks of something, we'll be here till the end of the meeting. We can walk through, and we will walk through, the rest of the items in the agenda.
Page eight.
Page eight. So going back to the agenda on page eight. I guess the first, the first item on which there might be some sort of an inquiry is Article 11. We did approve $78,000 appropriation for the Downtown Improvement District. I don't know if anybody from the Downtown Improvement District is here this evening to address that issue, but if there's any questions about that DID, tax, and appropriation. The next item relates to a previously approved and constructed improvement to the water and sewer at Mountain Home Trailer Park. I think this is probably the same as the item last year.
Yes.
Any questions about Article 12? Article 13 relates to our request to appropriate up to $170,000 from the unreserved, unassigned fund balance to defray Tropical Storm Irene costs. I will ask the town manager to provide a little bit of a current report at this time about the expenses we've incurred to make repairs following Hurricane Irene, and what reimbursements we're expecting from FEMA.
Thank you. And at town meeting, we will provide a handout for you. Things are kind of moving relatively quickly each day now. What has happened, after the hurricane, we have approximately $1.6 million worth of work, infrastructure work, that needs to be taken care of. Some of that is from utilities, some of it is roads, bridges, they're, so it tends to be more focused under the Public Works work. There also was a time of emergency personnel during the period, right before and right after the hurricane, that we were able to get some reimbursement for from FEMA. The process that is used for reimbursement from FEMA is that we're assigned a person from FEMA who comes, and we keep files of all the work that we're doing, we have projects that we have identified, and they will go through our projects, and they'll put their, you know, eyeball on the work, and et cetera, and they will then do, create what they call a project worksheet. And it's the project worksheet, then, that moves forward to the state and then to FEMA to get, to get approved and to get paid. Of whatever amount that worksheet is for, we will get 80 percent from the federal government from FEMA, 10 percent from the state, and then another 10 percent is the town match. At this point, it does look as though the state of Vermont will be eligible for enhanced FEMA benefits, but that has not yet been determined, and that is a determination that's made at the federal level, that's made by, in Congress, actually. If that were to happen, our, our contribution, the federal contribution goes from 80 percent up to 90 percent, the state is at 5, and then the town is at 5. There is also some discussion in the state that they maybe also be able to pick up some of the extra as well, but again, that's all still in the works. There's still a lot of balls in the air on this. Thus far, we have, we don't have all of our project worksheets done yet. Most of our projects are actually completed. We've done the work. We're waiting for FEMA to come and do the project worksheets, and, and check the work, and those types of things, and then, and then turn those in. Patrick Morland, the Assistant Town Manager, that's been his, his assignment. Patrick started in August, right before, right before the earthquake that we had, and then he was here for the hurricane. He's not, he's kind of an unlucky penny, but he's been really tracking, doing the bulk of a lot of the paperwork and making sure that we're tracking it. It gets very confusing, because some of our projects don't actually align with what they group together as a project worksheet. And we're trying to track, working with, with the finance department, with John O'Connor, our main focus has been, we want to make sure that we're tracking all of our expenses, and then tracking our receivables, tracking so that we know if we're getting paid by, from FEMA, and if we're getting paid by the state. And thus far, I think we have a system, we've tweaked it again this last week, so we think we're, 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 we think we're on our way. The reason that we're not able to give a good, firm number of what our costs may be is the fact that we don't have the project worksheets done, so we don't know what's been approved by FEMA yet. Because most of our work is actually completed, we're in a pretty good place, because we, we know how much we've spent, we've actually spent on a lot of things. And thus far, the project worksheets have been lining up, lining really well with our, our records and our expenses. There's just been an excellent, excellent job being done in finance with Patrick, and in the Public Works Department, tracking all of these. It is a lot of attention to detail that's required. The other part that makes it a little bit harder to know exactly what we may need is that some of the expenses we get reimbursed for from FEMA aren't actually expenses that show up in our expense line items. For instance, we get reimbursed for, during this, during the storm, we were reimbursed for use of our police vehicles, use of our, of our fire engines, and so we don't show that as an actual expense, but we're getting reimbursed for it. So sometimes, our expenses that show up in our budget, we actually get reimbursed more than the expenses that show up in the budget. Now, that doesn't mean necessarily that we haven't incurred those costs, because it does cost money to run your equipment, it does cost money to do those things, it's just it doesn't show up as an exact line item. One of the things that we're watching pretty closely is if we've been running, if we, you know, we were running a lot of our graders, we were running a lot of our big equipment, doing the fixes on these things, and so what's going to be the ramifications of that? Are we going to see, you know, some increased repair costs, those types of things? At this point, the, there's one main project that isn't complete yet, and won't be complete, probably will not be completed within this current fiscal year, and that is the permanent bridge at Cook Road. And at this point, we do have a project worksheet on that, and it's for about, is it about 400?
$296,000.
$296,000, about $300,000. However, we think that bridge will probably end up being more than that, because we've, because of the current that went through, it actually made that channel bigger there, and they base the estimate on what size bridge was there. And bridges, if you want to know, if you get anything over 35 feet, they go up in price. So if you can keep your bridges shorter, unfortunately, a short bridge doesn't always work.[1365.19][1365.19](LAUGHING). So we anticipate, that may go up. We won't know that until the actual work goes in, so that's our biggest unknown right now. I am very, very confident that $170,000 will not be needed. However, because of the unknown of that bridge, and because the bridge, just as an estimate, they have $300,000 for the bridge at Cook Road. The similar bridge is going in on Sunset Lake Road, and that's $800,000. So we're not talking about small differences, you know, we're talking, it can, it could get a lot more, and so we're, so we're going to, we're going to ask for, and you'll see it's an appropriate amount, up to $170,000. We will only utilize money if it's needed. And even, the reality is, if we would, I don't think we're, I don't think we're going to need that much, partly because of getting some additional monies for equipment rental, but, and also because I think we've done a really good job, I don't think we're going to see any expenses, all of our expenses are really being carefully documented, and I think we're going to get our full reimbursement. What would happen, then, is we would track this, we would track any amount that would need, that we would actually be utilizing. We would probably, we'll probably be coming back next year, asking this body to reverse this appropriation, okay? So essentially, put the money back into the unassigned fund balance. It used to be, if you waited three years, whether, if you, if you assigned money to capital and you kind of waited three years, it would automatically go back into your fund balance. They've changed some of the designations, John can explain that if people, anybody's interested, but now we have to have an actual motion by the body. And so to keep us honest, we'll be, we should be coming back next year, asking for some of this money to be, to go back into fund balance, and if we don't, then I would anticipate this body should have some questions for us. So I don't know if there's any questions on that.
The next items on the town meeting agenda are three articles from individual groups seeking tax exemptions for their property, the American Legion Little League Field, Camp Wabanong, and Family Gardens. If anybody wants to speak to those, or anybody has any questions about those, this would probably be a good time. I expect there'll be literature available, and somebody to speak to those issues at town meeting as well. And then we have the, the Human Services Funding, Article 17. Any questions? Then the final item, seeing the town meeting's going to run real short, is Bradenboro Climate Protection. If anybody wants to hear about that, I see Paul Cameron is here, and he may want to speak to the request for funding.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Paul Cameron, Director of Bradenboro Climate Protection, and we are requesting a $10,000 appropriation from the town for fiscal year 2013. This year marks our 10th year working to help town government, taxpayers, and businesses save energy and money. Since our 2002 start, we've advocated for numerous efficiency improvements in 15 municipal and school buildings that have so far reduced electric and fuel consumption, and an average of 27 percent. This year, BCP is collaborating with the Public Works Department and the Bradenboro Energy Committee to determine how many town streetlights can possibly be turned off or converted to high-efficiency LED fixtures to reduce the town's electric costs. We know this will pay off. We helped the town, two years ago, apply for federal stimulus funds to install LED light fixtures in the transportation center, that have cut electric consumption by 25 percent, and so far, saved over $4,800 annually. This push for LED light fixtures is just part of our work with Efficiency Vermont and its Energy Leadership Challenge, to help the town reduce its electric consumption by 7.5 percent between now and July 1st, 2013. And just to mention a couple of our other projects, we're advocating for the adoption of a property-assessed clean energy, or PACE, district in Bradenboro, that would allow homeowners to finance energy improvements in their homes with the financing paid back by an assessment on property taxes. We're also continuing our free annual series of efficiency and renewable energy workshops. Our next workshop will be on May 19th. It's on biomass heat at the Marlborough College Graduate Center, and we're coordinating the Business Transportation Roundtable, which is a group of local businesses that are working to promote transportation alternatives through programs such as the Way to Go Commuter Challenge, which will be May 14th through the 18th. So finally, I want to thank you all for your past support for our programs, and for considering our requests this year.
Any questions for Mr. Cameron? I think that I've just run through the entire agenda for town meeting. There's somebody in the back who's got an inquiry. I also want to just note that we did receive, with the town meeting packets, the report from the Finance Committee. I want to thank the Finance Committee for its work.[1746.83][1746.83](APPLAUSE). I don't know that we're going to be able to address those recommendations at town meeting, given the timing that the report was provided to us, but I know that I'll look forward, over the course of the year, to looking at those recommendations at the Select Board level, and to seeing which ones of those we can integrate into the work that we do budgeting and planning on your behalf during the course of the year. I don't know if anybody wants to speak to the Finance Committee report now, or wait till Town Meeting Day, but this would be a time to do that, if anybody wants to speak to it. All right, there was, yes, please. Town meeting, the Finance Committee, or a different issue? Town Meeting, the Finance Committee or a different issue? All right, well, please come up.
Martha Ramsden, District 2. I'd just like to put out a request to, if there is anyone here from the Finance Committee who could speak to this. I did hear it said that it might be too late to act or to work in any of the recommendations this year. But I would certainly like to be educated further on the possibility of perhaps that being able to happen to some degree. So if anyone from the committee could speak to that now, I'd very much appreciate it.
Well, I'll take a first shot at it and note that the single, the primary action item would be the proposal for the 1% sales tax. That's an item that we discussed this year as part of our budget analysis. There are risks and benefits. There are strengths and weaknesses to a 1% sales tax. It doesn't cover food. It doesn't cover cars. And so, the 1% sales tax would essentially hit hardware goods and crafts and other hard goods that are sold in town. Those are the businesses that we want to encourage being in town. And so, burdening them creates some risk, and there's people who've been opposed to that in the past. However, the sales tax does raise revenue from people who come into town to shop. And so, some of the costs that we have to incur because we're a hub and because we have more commerce here would be spread more evenly if we're raising money through a sales tax rather than through real estate tax. Those are trade-offs that we're going to have to consider going forward. The 1% sales tax, I believe, was previously rejected at a town meeting, six, seven, eight years ago, maybe. And we're certainly going to talk about it going forward because raising revenue is an issue we always have to consider. I saw Spoon's hand go up. Yeah, I haven't forgotten yet.
Spoon Agave, District 3. I chaired the Finance Committee this year. And it certainly was enjoyable. We had excellent people there. We took a very different approach than has been done in the past. I think you're all aware of it. Rather than going through the budget item by item to see whether there was too much spent here or too little there, we looked at the town's financial health and what determines, and how do we determine what the financial health of the town is. Recognizing, as we learned, as we looked back, for instance, just to make it more understandable, when we hear about, in our economy as a whole, that the housing market is flat, that means that our grand list is probably not going to increase, which means the same tax rate will produce the same amount of revenue. But expenses are still going up. So what is happening around, all around us, in the state and in the country as a whole, does have direct, well, indirect, but it affects what is and what will happen in this town, our town. And also, we looked at, we thought it was important to look at the town's financial policies, which ones we had and which ones we did not have, and to do research on what they may be. And we have a recommendation in now on the reserve policy, and we'll have more recommendations next year. And we also, as is noted, we looked at some issues that are not on the agenda, but we were very well aware are important issues. One is the 1% sales tax. One is the police and fire station. These are issues. They are not on the immediate agenda, but they will be here soon. And so, we weighed in on them. We looked at them. We have a lot more looking because they're not far enough advanced. We don't have all the information that we need and that we will have. But we just wanted to give people some advance notice on these things, to be thinking about it and understand what they may mean to us here. And last but not least, of course, we always need more people. And it's a lot more interesting now on that committee than it ever has been. So, and you don't need a lot of special knowledge. You can learn as you go. So please let me hear from you if you have any interest at all.
And we do want to thank the Finance Committee for its work. There may be more about the Finance Committee, but gentleman in the back's been waiting patiently to speak. Thanks for waiting.
Hi, Caleb Clark, District 2. I'm new, and at just a point of clarification and context on Articles 14 through 16, are these the tax exempt? Just for me, are these new organizations applying? Or has this come up years past and they're normal exemptions?
I think each one of them has had an exemption in the past. And I'm going to ask Barb to, or Russ.
I'm going to, Russ, yeah. I would defer to Russell Rice. You may just, you can go up there.
Unless you want to come here.
Well, you can come right there, too. There's one right there.
Well, the Camp Wabanong and the Little League Field are existing exemptions that the state questioned this year. For the first time this last year, they went through every exempt property in the state and questioned a good percentage of them. In those cases, they were believed to be statutorily exempt, and the state does not agree. So they have applied to have a town meeting voted exemption. The Family Garden had a town voted exemption, which they did not renew last year. I think they forgot. And now, they would like to get it back.
Russell, do you know how many properties in total are voted, town meeting tax exemptions?
I don't know the number of properties. We did calculate approximately 16% of the grand list value.
Dr. Kowens? I think the mic, Tim wants you to use the mic.
Are there implications in terms of, if something is statute, by statute exempt from taxes, I would imagine it doesn't somehow get counted in our grand list when the state decides how much we need to pay them? If the town meeting votes to exempt something that is not exempt by statute, do we, as a town, end up having to pay money for those properties to the state?
If the town meeting chooses to exempt the property from the state education tax, the town is responsible for paying it.
So we would now actually have to be paying extra money to the state for those properties?
That's correct.
Well, but for each of these three proposed exemptions, we put on the warning only to exempt the municipal portion, not the education portion of the taxes. So we wouldn't have to pay the education portion if we're not exempting the education portion. We're not going to have to pay it out of the town money.
I think when we vote exemptions, we usually do it for three years?
Usually, they're five years. There's an attempt here to get on a schedule.
Okay.
So that other properties that will be renewed in four years will come up at the same meeting as these, if they should be passed.
So when we voted, four years ago, three years ago, two years ago, one year ago, on a group of properties, I would imagine some of those properties that we exempted were decided by the state not to be exempted by statute.
No, that's not correct because if they're exempted by statute, they would not come before town meeting.
Okay, but, well, let me, again, then say, we voted on a number of properties, four years ago, three years ago, and to exempt them. At that point, we didn't have the differentiation, I don't think. Did we?
Yes.
We did?
Over here.
Thank you. Sherry Manning, District 1. Russ, can you explain why the state might not have approved that, then?
Well, the-
Because they had in the past?
The Little League, well, it's not as if they had in the past because the exemptions have always come from the town. And during these acceptance and mutation of the state education law, many properties were considered grandfathered, a favorite term for many purposes. In this case, the American Legion is exempt, but they don't feel that the Little League Field is not adjacent to the clubhouse and is not part of their essential activities. And Camp Wabanong used to be a 4-H club. No longer has that association. There's actually language in the state statutes that discuss 4-H clubs.
Thank you.
We didn't like their scrutiny. Are there other questions that we can respond to?
Ronnie Johnson, District 3. I'm wondering if this is an appropriate time. You said that if we thought of any other budget questions, we could bring them up. So I'm just wondering if this is an appropriate time to ask questions about the capital expense part of the budget and what's happening there?
Absolutely. The capital expense part of the budget was reviewed as part of our budget process, and we did approve it. We're on page 77 of the warning, if anybody has any questions about that. You won't see the grader and the extracurser in there, for example, anymore. Yes, please.
I have a question about this because some of the figures are in a pale. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Susan Steforski from District 2. And some of these numbers are very faint, and I didn't know what that meant.
Barb can speak to that?
Yeah, actually, this, yeah, this is actually a color-coded chart. And I apologize, it didn't show up well in black and white. Some of the, if you look at page 82, it shows the totals. And it shows, so in FY '13, there are, which is the fiscal year, there's actually $11,985,465 of total capital. $11 million of that is shown as a bond. Now, that is actually not an article question. That is a placeholder for a police-fire. So you're not, nobody's approving that because it's not coming up as a separate article. That's just showing it in there. $311,380 is going to be through leases. About three, four years ago, John Lysnering started, we do a five-year lease. It's essentially a five-year note on vehicles or equipment. And it's a way to kind of, that he's suggested that we do it. We started doing it that way. And I'm not sure how Mr. O'Connor, this year, we're continuing with doing the five-year notes or five-year leases on equipment. The $200,000 in donation, that corresponds with the Phase 2 of the West River Park Project. If you recall, the town, Representative Town Meeting approved a bond of about $250,000 to purchase the property. But the West River Park Committee, Recreation and Parks Board, are doing the fundraising for the actual, the actual work that's happening there. So that's another, kind of, an estimated $200,000. And then, for cash, we're showing that we'd be using $474,085 of cash for, to do, to address the costs. Most, most of the, I don't know if people have questions about the individual costs that are in the capital line item. What we've started to try to do more so is when there are grants that are available, different things that are available, to look at our capital plan and to see how can we fund some of these through other, through grants. For instance, the library has a microfiche machine in the capital, and there's a, they've applied for USDA grant for that. And so, if successful, and we believe we are successful at that, it won't, we won't use that full amount of cash for that purchase. One of the things that I think is a little bit interesting, and it somewhat goes with this, although it's a little bit off as well, in the FY '11 fiscal year, we had, we had in various grants over $18 million. Of that, the majority of that, $15,600, was for various grants through the, for the wastewater treatment plant. Those, some of those are called grants, but you pay back a 2% administrative fee. But that still leaves almost, almost $3 million in FY '11 of grants that the town was able to take advantage of. And I think that's a substantial amount of work that's happening that is, that we are trying to more and more leverage the money, leverage our tax-based money to, as match for various grants. And we're trying more and more to make sure that those, that the grants are being utilized for things that, you know, we're looking to purchase anyway. So that we are continuing to try to make the budgeting easier for the board, make the tax payments less of a hardship on the citizens, and still be able to provide some of the services that we've come to. So if people have individual questions on any purchases, there's a lot of folks here who could probably answer that. All the department heads are here.
Yes, over here. Yeah, on the right here? I just, oh, it's still Ronnie. Hi, Ronnie.
Ronnie Johnson, District 3. I'm sorry, but I didn't understand, partially because I was trying to get back to my seat, what you said about the items for the, the light shaded items for the Fire Department and the Police Department?
The light, yeah, the light shaded items reflect things that we might bond for or donations. There are some that are a little lighter that are leases. I did try to put notes on those. So if you, for instance, I tried to tag things with lease. It has a little thing that says lease, and that's to give you an idea of where the leases are, what things might be bonded, if we were to bond. And again, the police-fire, we're not, we haven't moved forward with that yet, but we're looking at it. We have it in the, in the capital plan. But, so the majority of, the majority of things are, that we're actually in are either a five-year lease or our cash payments. So the color shading just indicates how we would be paying for it.
Okay. And for, back to the police and fire, then. We are going to look at it at some point this year, or we might not? Or what's the, I don't, I'm just wondering what the intention is.
The timeframe with the police-fire, we actually, on the 24th, hope to have some schematics for this body to look at. We've started, reached, the board has seen the schematics. We are reaching out to, we're trying to meet with neighbors next Monday to see how they feel about what we're looking at is renovations and additions at existing facilities is where we're looking at.
So might we have to have a special town meeting?
We might have to, yes, yes. We're hopeful that we'll be, at some point in this year, able to have a special town meeting for that. But we want to make sure that we have enough smaller group public meetings prior to that. Unless, well, they can't just, could they just approve this on Saturday, the 24th? No, sorry.
Oh, too bad. Thank you.
Are there any other questions this evening? Are you raising your hand, or do you see somebody over there?
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. I think, I want to talk about a couple items that were on the Town Finance Committee report, but before I get into that, I want to thank David for stepping up as vice chair to take the chair's position. Dick DeGray couldn't make it tonight, and I thought, David, an excellent, excellent job of preparing for this and conducting this meeting, I'm grateful for that. The Town Finance Committee report is quite an interesting document, and I think it's, it's a very constructive vehicle for launching some debate that is quite appropriate. There's one item I'd like to talk about in particular, and I'd also like to comment generally on the article because so much work went into it. And I really salute the Finance Committee for the work it did. It's an original approach and an entirely appropriate approach, in my opinion. There is comment in there on the so-called OPEB, or O-P-E-B, which is an acronym for Other Post-Employee Benefits, a, an item that, when I first saw it, and over the past year was quite alarmed by. Not as alarmed as I was, but there is, but it is an example of some complexity that should be examined, that I think that my fellow citizens in Brattleboro should be familiar with, because it is really emblematic of some of the sophisticated and complex accounting that we have to deal with. If you take a look at page one hundred and thirty, you'll see that it, that it actually doesn't tell us an awful lot. Last year's report, if you still have it, was really, really, really interesting, it was several pages long for this little item. And I would recommend that when you read that Finance Committee report and look at that and scratch your head, you go back to the blue-covered town report from last year and read about the O-P-E-B. Now, what that was saying was that the town's obligation to those police and firefighters who had twenty, twenty or twenty-plus years of service, upon retirement, were going to get half of their health insurance paid for by the town until they reach age sixty-five, which is actually for when they're qualified for Medicare. And what that was saying was that the town is behind on saving for that increasing expense. We had a couple of retirements last year, some long-timers, so we're going to pay half of those health insurance premiums, and we should be glad to do it because these folks put themselves in harm's way for the sake of public safety for a long time, with great risks to themselves and the financial security of their families. What that report said was that we should have put aside about three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars last year and another three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars this year. The so-called present value, not the actual number of dollars, but if discount back to present value, that would, that would, with earnings over the long haul, come to the larger numbers that are forecast by an actuary to cover those costs, should be funded with annual, you know, we should be paying basically an annuity into a trust that would cover those liabilities into the future. And that, according to the accounting theory behind this, and it is a theory, we have an enormous present value in that, in that, in that total long-term liability, that's going to be in the millions, like fourteen million dollars, and, which is coincidentally the size of this year's budget. So you can tell how large that is, but spread out over a number of years, it's, of course, smaller, but still quite material and getting larger every year. I would like to ask Barb to explain why we are not funding that this year, because the Barb, the other Barb, the Barb in this report, is that we're not doing something we should be doing. And the problem with that is that we do not know what the state's insurance situation is going to look like, because it's all in a cocked hat with healthcare reform. And the computation is one, that is summarized here on page one thirty, is strongly suggested by what's called GASB, which is the Government Accounting Standards Board, which said, if you're not funding this, you should at least be telling the people responsible for the budget, which is, of course, the town meeting representatives, what it is they're not doing and why, and why perhaps they should think about it. So, a small item, we're not even putting it in the budget this year, but it's an issue that has bitten very badly a number of large municipalities. We've had bankrupted cities and counties even in the past couple of years that were crippled by their inability to cover their pension costs, their post-employee benefits, post-employment benefits. I was alarmed myself by this because I was thinking, well, Brattleboro is now going to be swimming in the same kettle of boiling water as California, or Nevada, and New Jersey, parts of Alabama, Rhode Island, oh, but not the case. And so we see in here, in this succinct report, an issue, but it is something that we covered in our budget deliberations and felt that it was appropriate not to budget for. Can you take it away, Barb? To, to just put a lid on it.
Couple of things, just so that people know, the benefit that we're talking about is limited to professional firefighters, police officers, and it's limited to health insurance. We don't have a pension plan that we operate ourselves, and I think, Chris, you're right in that most of the cities that have found themselves in a worse position are pension. And that's a different animal than this health insurance. Health insurance is a benefit for a police or firefighter who's been with the town for twenty years, twenty consecutive years, and they can, they can retire at age fifty, most do not, basically, most of them actually are closer to fifty-five or sixty. We will pay a percentage of their health insurance until they reach age sixty-five. So we've tried to really limit that liability so that it starts and stops at more specific times. Currently, we work on a pay-as-you-go basis. We have been paying retirement, health insurance for these folks for a number of years. And I think we currently have, we have a couple people, we probably have three people maybe now, who are, who are talking about, who are on this, who are paying for right now, and they're paying a portion of it as well. There are several reasons where, why I don't think, I don't think it made sense to fund this, and I probably asked John O'Connor to talk about this a little bit, I'm going to give him a little more of a heads-up, though, in that the, there's a couple of reasons. One is that I, with the possibility of the state embarking on a health insurance, a state health insurance, there's a possibility that how this, how, when someone leaves retirement, where they'll be getting their health insurance from. Okay? And until the state makes a little bit more clear of what they're looking at, I'm not sure, given the financial issues where we're at right now, if this would be the smartest place to bank your money. This isn't money you're banking that you're going to be spending each year, you're going to be doling out a little bit to pay off. This is money that's put in a reserve fund that is just used as an accounting process to offset costs on paper. Okay? And that, there's a difference in that. So where do you want to put your money? You know, there are competing factors that we're looking at here. Let me start with the other thing that I would say, if we are going to be funding this, this liability, I would suggest we really look at how we're funding it, because there are several different ways to fund it and several different types of funds that you may, you know, trusts, or reserve accounts, or various things that you may want to put in. I would never suggest we put it in a specified reserve account, because if things change and you essentially lose access to that money. But that would be my opinion, and this would be a larger question for other folks. There are a lot of competing needs right now, and you really need to start deciding what are some of the higher needs. Fund balance, you know, also in the finance report is, at this point, our fund balance is about what percent of our?
Seven.
Is that seven percent? Okay? That was a fund balance we didn't really plan to build. For, to reach the fund balance in the finance report, we're going to have to actively fund that fund balance, and municipalities do it. They put, they raise taxes to put money in a fund balance, and it makes sense to have a fund balance. So that's a competing, that's another competing need. You know, there are, you know, is this the time where you're going to raise taxes to put money into a reserve, a reserve fund that will, basically is used as paper? Most municipalities are not funding this through a, most municipalities are working on a pay-as-you-go system. And so at this point, you know, last year, the board put some money, Representative Town Meeting put some of our reserve fund balance, put some of our unreserved fund balance into essentially a reserve, a reserve account, about thirty thousand dollars for this. I just don't know financially if that's how you would, you would really move forward, particularly when I think that the, I don't think the risk is as high. I think numbers pretty eye-opening when you look at it, but I think any actuarial report is pretty eye-opening when you look at it. With that, John?
Thanks, Barb. As Barb said, this is a very large expense for the town. Fiscal year 2010, the amount that we would have funded, if we would have fully funded the liability, would have been four hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. This past fiscal year, the amount that we would have had to fund would have been four hundred twenty-one thousand, four ninety-eight. So these are very large numbers, and to tie that kind of money up into irrevocable trust with the kinds of changes that are going on with the healthcare industry at this point in single payer coverage, doesn't make a lot of sense to me at this point in time. This is simply an accounting, a way to account for liabilities in the future that we're going to owe people, which is the health insurance that we've promised to pay them, and it's trying to find a way to spread that cost over their working life. So it's just an accounting methodology, it's an estimate, and it's based on a lot of estimates. Healthcare inflation, how much you can earn on the funds, salary increases, oh, pardon me? Yeah. It's a, there's a lot of variables associated with this, and I think we need the discussion, I think Chris is right, we need to discuss this and fully talk about this, but I think at this point in time, there probably are higher priorities that we should be looking at.
I would also weigh in with one comment. Our audit on page one hundred and twenty, with respect to annual OPEB costs and net OPEB obligation, reads in the last sentence, under GASB Statement Number Forty-Five, it is not required that the town actually pay the annual required contribution each year, but it does need to be calculated and reported in the annual financial statements. And we've also made sure this evening that all of you know all about it.
Thanks, Steve. My point in bringing up that matter, which was like an elephant in the room, but at the same time, something that doesn't even show up in the budget, is that this, that this Town Finance Committee report is a promising document, and I think that there could have been more constructive features in it, had it not come to us so late. My first interaction with a member of the Finance Committee came at nine fifteen last night, in a phone call, as I was sitting down to dinner after a long day downtown. So I was a little short with Mr. Agave when he called, but my point is that I think that the discussion of the points raised in this report are really germane to the fiscal health of the town. And were there more communication about these items in this, I think we would have an even more, a more powerful tool for the debate that needs to happen about where our, where our fair little city is going to go into the future. There were some items here about strategic budget planning, the capital, capital budgeting that were quite germane. I would have loved to have the opportunity to really, to fillet that fish on the table, bone by bone. We didn't do that, we didn't hear a word from the Finance Committee, and I'm sorry about that. I see also a glaring omission, which was with respect to the three hundred fifteen thousand dollars that we budget, three hundred fifteen thousand, almost a third of a million dollars that we spend on tipping fees for trash, can you believe it? At the expense of a road grader, a police car, the rec department equipment shelter that it wanted for the equipment to take even more care of the, of the parks, including the new park. No recycling coordinators, we've, we had recycling coordinators do a tremendous amount of work, and they were able to prompt a somewhat greater participation, and they, in an excellent report that I would recommend that everybody find and read, they recommend that recycling coordination continue. That was not funded, we couldn't afford it, we couldn't afford it. Our town could not afford some things that we need. There was also, this was close to my heart, was a request by people who live in Morningside Commons, which, in which there's a very large elderly population, wanting a sidewalk to lead into town. That's not in this budget, it's nowhere near, we hardly even discussed it. It wasn't even worth bringing it up because we knew we could not afford it. Instead, we're spending that kind of money on tipping fees. Now let me just review for a moment what a tipping fee is. When you recycle, when you recycle, you're putting a stream of reusable things back into the, into, into production. And when you compost, you're taking things out of, out of permanent landfill, then making use of it in some fashion. A dairy farmer in Greenfield picks that all up and does something to it so that it can be reused with the help of some cows. And what's left over is what is literally tipped into roll-off containers and hauled out of town at great expense, when you add up all those trips out of town, at a hundred, this year, it's, this current year, not yet ended, at a hundred dollars a ton, it's going up to a hundred and six dollars a ton for the coming fiscal year, which we had to budget for, eating up all the savings. And that trash goes into a pit in Moretown and somewhere else, and that is a pit that is filling up, and thanks to Hurricane Irene, Tropical Storm Irene, that pit is filling up faster than was anticipated, so on one fine day, we're going to be confronted with an even greater cost. Three hundred fifteen thousand dollars for tipping fees for trash that we do not really need to tip. It's a controllable cost that our community can cover, our community can do this from the way we just take care of our refuse, in our own, beginning, right in our own homes, in our kitchens. A two hundred fifty thousand dollar grader was one, was something that we struggled with, I struggled with in particular. I was, I'm the kid in the sandbox, I like big equipment. It's, it's, it's something we needed in order to take better care of our roads. And what is our largest responsibility as a town? It's for keeping the place safe, and that includes keeping roads clear, and a police cruiser, Chief Rin wanted two, and he fought hard for it, and we gave him one, not because we figured, not because we felt... not because we felt that he should have one. And we didn't deny the grader because we felt that they could do without it. We did it because we can't afford it. This is not a debate that was brought up with the Finance Committee. And I'm sorry about that. It was a missed opportunity. There are some philosophical positions in there on which it is based. One is an assumption that we're actually in a long-term recession we'll never get out of. My criticism of that is like, and amazingly, considering who is on the committee, it's similar to the criticism leveled at the Pentagon for fighting the last war in its budget. Budgeting for the last war, not the current needs. And so I'm saying, I think that's debatable. I think it's debatable, and it should be debated. And personally, I disagree with that. I think that we are going to come out of this, and I think it's a matter of philosophy. And it's a philosophical debate that is not debated. One other thing that I would love to work with the Finance Committee on is something of long-term strategic importance to the town. And it's the library. Here we are in a society that is very close to being called a post-industrial society. It's actually a late-industrial society. We don't have a lot of manufacturing clamoring to move into our manufacturing space. We're a knowledge economy. And where does the knowledge economy begin to grow and to strengthen? It's in something like the library. And yet, what have we as a town done with the library hours in the past few years? Can you go to the library beyond 6 o'clock on Thursday? Can you go into the library on a Saturday afternoon? And who made it like that? We did, because we felt we couldn't afford it. I think this is a strategically important issue. And I would direct, I would suggest that people read the front-page article in the New York Times Weekend Review section from this past Sunday that talked about the countries that have leapfrogged ahead of us in terms of math knowledge, countries that are low in resources, that have done amazing things by virtue of the education that they have emphasized. They are information societies. We are an information society. Who's doing better? Do we want to have a library that is underfunded with fewer hours in a highly competitive world, an increasingly highly competitive world, funded in such a way that we're actually leaving more money so that we can throw stuff away the way we want to? I find that a ridiculous, ridiculous notion that is absurd in the course of history. And so this is my touching on this report, which I think is really an important touchstone for the debates that we as a town need to have, discussions and debates. And I'm sorry to have carried on at length like this, but I thought it was an opportunity because if the Finance Committee would care to comment between now and next town meeting, or perhaps even during town meeting, I think it would get that debate going very appropriately. Once again, I'd like to thank that committee for thinking outside the historical box of what the Finance Committee has done. They did a wonderful thing by putting so many issues on the table, flawed in some fashion, but that's okay because they did their job, and they did it, I think, beautifully. And I'm not going to say anymore on this because it's late, and I thank you for listening.
Any further comments or questions for us this evening? I think Dora?
Well, I just wanted to say, since Don apparently was not here to speak for District 3, that we do have one seat that still needs to be filled.
Any further business to come before the meeting? Do we need a motion to adjourn? I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
Some, some of?
All those in favor? Thank you for coming.